Today is August 15th, 2018. It is 9:00 in the morning. I'd like to call this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners to order. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you say that's what you do?
Well, I think we should probably recess for about 10 minutes, maybe and see if Commissioner Pearson makes it in. He's probably across the street.
Make sure it's Pearson.
Pearson, yes.
We'll get that clear.
All right. So I'm going to be recessed for 10 minutes. Okay, y'all. Call this meeting back to order. Mike, we've already been through item one and two. So we will begin with any citizen desiring to be heard. I understand we have Mr. Chris Bergen here. And you're from where?
I'm from the former cell law group and I'm here together with Tony Puckett, who is with McAfee Taff.
Okay. So under, because we're under any citizen desiring to be heard, you get to make statements and talk to the board. However, it cannot be an iterative discussion back and forth. We can't ask questions. So we could get close to violations of the Open Meeting Act by not having them agendized if we did that. But you are more than welcome to give us a great briefing overview, details as you'd like to have it. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you and good morning, everybody. Our law firms together are representing a number of cities, counties, and tribes in what's been called the opioid litigation. I probably don't need to say much to anybody here about the opioid crisis. We've all been touched by it, but I want to talk a little bit about it. You'll see from the materials that we've given you, this is a national health crisis and it impacts everybody and it impacts counties directly. There is litigation pending both here in Oklahoma and on a national scale in what's called multi-district litigation. And that case is in Cleveland, Ohio. The premise is pretty simple. These opioids were put on the market dishonestly. Their FDA approval wasn't based on truth. And the companies making the opioids, particularly Purdue Pharmacy and their distributors, people like McKesson, have flooded this country with opioids. This drug crisis is very different from the ones we've all experienced because these folks weren't trying to get high. They weren't looking for a recreational drug. They were simply taking the prescriptions given to them by their physicians for everyday pain circumstances. People who delivered children or got hurt at work or twisted an ankle coming out of church. And they ended up addicted to these opioid drugs. The litigation nationwide includes cities and counties. Arkansas's counties are in it. The city of Chicago and its county, Cook County, are in. The city of Baltimore is in. And what we've decided to do and have been fortunate enough to have a number of clients already is to litigate this on behalf of Oklahoma counties and cities and some tribes. The premise is that this is a burden on the community and you'll see from your materials, it actually costs the county. It costs you in terms of your police, fire, and first responders and in lots of other ways because these folks need help and they're not ultimately producing in society the way they would be. The other premise that I want to talk to you about is why do this? As you know from the news, the Attorney General has hired a law firm and filed suit on behalf of the state of Oklahoma. And that lawsuit is proceeding. There is no agreement or statute or contract or covenant that would provide for the recovery received on behalf of the state of Oklahoma from the AG's office to be shared with cities and counties. If you remember the tobacco litigation from the late 1990s, that was a $234 billion settlement. Oklahoma got its share and frankly, they're managing it as they see fit. But that money did not trickle down to programs in the cities or counties. So what we're hoping to do is offer you folks a seat at the table. We're litigators. McAfee Taff is the oldest and probably have to say most prestigious law firm in Oklahoma. My group are trial lawyers and I've been a lawyer for 35 years and we do pharmaceutical litigation nationwide. We happen to be here in Oklahoma, but we've been in drug litigation since the first round of the diet drug Fen-Phen litigation in 2000 and trial lawyers before that. You'll see from your packet, these are contingency fee cases, which means we will be paid a percentage of the recovery. And that's what the other counties and cities have signed on for. This isn't going to happen overnight, but we think it's something that's going to take perhaps four years or so. We don't know yet where all the suits are going to be filed because there's some tactical considerations going on. We'd like to keep them in Oklahoma if we can. The drug companies would like to remove them. That's what the process is called in the federal courts and get them in Cleveland. That won't be a bad place either because the judge we have there is frankly, feels like he's presiding over a national health crisis, not just a lawsuit. And he's very anxious to get these cases resolved. The idea is if we can get a verdict or a settlement for the county, you folks would have the opportunity to set up a trust and to use those funds for things like drug court, rehab programs, education, diversion, police and fire, things like Narcan being available to your first responders. And it would be a fund that you could use to help counteract the terrible impact opioids have on a community. Just like the tobacco case, the defendants don't care what happens with the money. If they settle this case or verdict is awarded against them, they don't have any control over that. They just want to buy the piece. And so the money then, if it's recovered by yourselves, would be, as I said, put in a trust that you would administer and design to benefit the community. I honestly think it doesn't have any significant downsides for the county. There is a provision in the law that provides that attorney's fees can be awarded against somebody who sues if the lawsuit is frivolous or if they bring it in bad faith. We're not frivolous lawyers and we wouldn't file a case in bad faith. And frankly, the fact that these cases are being filed nationwide by good, responsible lawyers tells you that it's not a bad faith situation. But I would in fairness tell you that that's the only potential downside. We will handle all the costs of litigation, both in terms of our time and the significant expenses that are going to be necessary. And we will get reimbursed for those costs if we're successful. If we're not successful, we are just out that money and out those hours of our time. I can't in this sense field any questions from you, but we will be available at an appropriate time and appropriate notice should you have questions. Your district attorney is aware of his lawsuit and of course, I urge you to seek her good counsel in evaluating this proposal. We currently represent the city of Oklahoma City, a number of smaller cities like Lawton and a bunch of counties who are frankly making this presentation to about every county in Oklahoma we can get to. We currently represent the city of Enid as well and Comanche County and Stevens County and well, a number of others are frankly in the works. So that's what we'd like to do. We'd like to go to work for you and we'd like to bring some money back to this community to help counteract the impact of opioids. This is kind of a one chance deal. You guys, of course, have seen waves of drugs and abused drugs come through the community, like every community. And there was no recovery against a meth lab. There's no recovery against Mexican marijuana growers, poppy growers. This is the only one where there's actually a responsible party for this crisis. And this will be the opportunity you have to recover.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. I'd like to just add a couple of things on the, our firm was very pleased to have the opportunity to work with Chris's firm in addressing this societal health crisis. It really is a national health crisis.
Who is your name again, sir?
Tony Puckett.
Thank you, Tony.
At McAfee Taff. And our firm is the largest firm in the state. We do all kinds of litigation and often represent businesses and employers. In this case, in this situation, we wanted to be on the side that suing the companies who are responsible for this harm, for this national health crisis, those are the opioid manufacturers and distributors. The frankly evident that's already available publicly shows that opioids were and are a highly addictive medication that had specific, appropriate medical uses. But through the sales tactics of the manufacturers, pharmaceutical manufacturers, they tried to expand the scope of how opioids were used to more commonly just any sort of pain relief at all, knowing how addicted these drugs were. And that's led to societal costs that counties, public entities like you all and cities have had to pick up through law enforcement, through other needs in the community of people that are, that become addicted to this. And that's why I think you've seen, we've seen so many cities and counties sue over the last several years and why there are more than 1,000 cases pending in the multi-district litigation in Ohio, brought by some of the largest counties and cities in the country and some of the smallest as well, because they're all affected by this. And so the reason, I think, for you to consider in looking at this issue for Logan County is what are the effects on your county? Talk to your sheriff, for example, talk to your other personnel and find out what the effects are in your county specifically. And then through this litigation, it's really the only opportunity you have to try to address that harm, those consequences created by the opioid manufacturers and distributors for Logan County and receive some sort of recovery in order to address those specifically as you all, as the elected officials, see is best for your community. And so to me, that's one of the biggest reasons to consider this and why we're happy to be here talking with you all, as well as the other counties and cities we've been meeting with over the last few months and will continue to meet with in the coming months. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Puckett. Mr. Bergen. We will put this on our agenda to consider an action to either join or not this with you guys on the 31st.
And I'm assuming it was in each one, his legal services agreement and resolution that they have prepared. I can forward those off to Lowell. They'll have to be looked at before.
That would be a good prep, I think, for the meeting on the 31st to take action. Thank you, Ruth. Any other citizens desiring to be heard? Martin, you have a question?
No, I'm just going to thank him for coming.
I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Talk about it.
We just have a little, it's not an idea to receive questions.
Knowing both of these guys just for a couple of years, they do have a lot of questions and I have a few of my own and that man sitting right there has a few as well, I'm sure, and some input. And we'll get to that on the 31st. We'll have a really good discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Guys, thank you.
Okay. Consideration of possible action on approving minutes of August 6th.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Have a motion?
I'll second Mike's motion.
And a second. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
We want to get the clerk to say, I think she's going to try to get contact.
Yeah, well, slow down there because we've got to talk about something near and dear to y'all's hearts here. Hey, Troy, we have approved the minutes of August 6th.
And I'm sorry, I was just trying to tie up what we needed to do.
No worries. Thank you very much. There you go. Okay, item five. Consideration of possible action on approving resolution and order calling an election to determine whether or not an emergency medical service district should be formed embracing the areas of Logan County, Oklahoma contained within the following school districts. Covington Douglas, Moho Orlando, Coyle, Perkins Tyring, is how you pronounce that, right? Luther and Wellston School Districts for the purpose of providing ambulance services within said district and for the purpose of authorizing a tax levy of three mils on the dollar of assessed valuation of all taxable property in the district for the purpose of support, organization, operation, and maintenance of district ambulance services.
Well, I definitely think that we need to do it, so I'll make the motion to approve.
Remember the debate about raising taxes?
But I agree that the MS is needed.
I guess it's up to you to second it or not, then.
I guess Martin's not going to vote for it.
I don't think.
It's not in my district. This affects you guys' districts.
There it is. I mean, we can either do it and the city of Guthrie might keep servicing them people, but they have come to me many times and said that they're thinking about not servicing outside of their boundaries. So that's going to leave all these people with no ambulance service.
Right, you are. With the exception of South County and they've said that they will not quit servicing South County and that small sliver down south, they will continue to do that.
So here's the thing, it's neither yes or no. Let the people decide if they're going to do it or not. It ain't up to us, it's up to them to vote for it, so.
I would just remind the board that the reason this was prepared and is here is because in May, this board took action to take this step.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
You didn't know back in May there was going to be a tax on that?
Yeah, I did. I just debated and even then, I was going to vote on it.
And I'll go ahead and second your motion, your money. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All abstain.
I think the taxpayers will be thrilled to have an ambulance service if this passes.
Two ayes or three ayes?
I have two ayes and one abstention if I recorded that correctly.
You did. Okay. So we have a commissioner. Item six. Consideration of possible action on approving ingress and egress agreement with Alexandria Pennington's property in southeast quarter, 1915 north and three west.
Is this your district, Mike?
Nope.
This is for Martin and ingress, egress?
What are we going to do? Well, we're, I believe these are the folks that wanted, were allowing us to haul in limbs and trees and that kind of stuff onto the property that we trim, trimage, so we don't have to haul it out.
How many were approved?
All right, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Item seven. Consideration of possible action on acknowledging receipt of notice of tort claim from Jason Peck.
Okay, this is the ingress agreement.
Make the motion to accept.
Your knowledge.
I'll second Mike's motion.
The tort claim?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Objection?
We have a man on eight and nine.
Okay, eight and nine. Out. Item 10. Consideration of possible action on approving the following temporary road crossing permits for H2 Services LLC. There are four of them crossed with parallel to County Road 66, 1.2 miles west of County Road 66 and US 77, cross Bow Road, .75 miles south of County Road 66 and Bow Road.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Cross, thank you. I don't want to read all this again. Yes, I could. I have a motion, I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes without objection. Item 10. Consideration of possible action on consent agenda.
You guys, yeah, you guys sign down.
I expect your.
Chief Harlow, been here today for this. I was dealing up on the desk and basically far truck.
Yeah, her daughter, first day of school today.
Oh, well, that's, that is really important stuff.
He was there until at least 4:30, probably 5:00 and she had to be in school by 9:30, so.
Is it like her first?
First grade.
First grade?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's important stuff. That's pretty important. Well, he's got that walked 10 times a year.
You can see it coming a mile away with the lights on, that's for sure.
Yeah, probably five miles if they raise the ladder up a little bit.
That had been written down a couple of times because of lightning.
Yeah. They don't ride a big grounding rod up there?
No, it don't look like it. There's a lot of lights going up to the top. I didn't see that.
They haven't noticed if I'm talking to a ground and rod. That's not a good idea. I don't know. It just attracts lightning.
Get some attention.
First one to know?
Yeah.
28.
Are we done?
The reports that are sitting there for you are the last of the consent.
Yes, ma'am. I will get this initial court. It's all this District 3 stuff.
Man, they're doing business up there.
You going to be done with the light down machine next week?
I hope so. I hope so.
I got one that needs to start as soon as we can, as soon as you're finished. No hurry.
Sounds like it.
Well, it's kind of a hurry, yeah.
Sounds like it.
I'd like to get this stuff done, but I got, we got a lot of other stuff to do. I like we got to wait on that.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 12, consideration of possible action on approving claims for payment for August 2018.
These six school districts, they'll have their, they'll vote, so like, three of them could pass, three of them could fail, or is it all grouped into one?
It's all one district. It's all the school districts vote on the same question. And it's a democratic process with all of them getting participated in. Except for those in the admin school district that's not included.
No November ballot with these at all, is that right? There's only 45 questions on there, so it'll fall right in.
Yes, sir. That's why we needed to do it this month, so we could get it to the election board in time for them to get it on the ballot. When was the last they'd do that, by the way?
22nd.
Yeah, so we got in right under the wire.
Couple of kids got to turn these up.
They had a little rough transition.
Looks like it. I don't know where to work for it. Got to use this time.
So if it is approved, can, does the EMS board that wants to go into that district, do they have to take the whole thing, or can they take a portion of the school districts or?
It's all one district.
All one, so if they want to do it, they have to do the whole.
So the board, once, once that goes to vote of the people, if it's approved by the vote of the people, then we will meet again to appoint members of that board, and at that time, they will determine how they want to manage that district.
So they can have two, three, one?
Yeah, vendors, as far as ambulance service vendors.
Right.
Yeah, they can contract with one or many, they can contract with municipal or commercial providers, or a combination of the vote of the two, and however they want to do it.
There's a lot of scenarios, I'm making sure I have them in the right scenario.
And then all that in the admin area will be taken over by, I'm sorry, I guess, it's their turn.
Do we know like, what percentage of the county's made up of these school districts? Is it like 40% of the people, or land, or?
Land mass, just looking at the map, you're kind of looking at not even a third, probably land mass, and population wise, a very small amount.
About 20%. But they need services too.
If you're looking at that map, Chris, it's really going to start down here in the fall, or southeast, that's the Luther School District, and it's just going to curve all the way up and around to Noble and back across and over to Marshall. Covington Douglas comes in at the very top there, out of Garfield.
Chris has one, Guthrie has one, another half, right? Cash has one that comes into the county as well.
So that's...
And then the ends of pockets.
Yeah.
I'll move we approve the claim.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 13, consideration of possible action on approving purchase card payments for August 2018, a new agenda item.
So we have a brand new item, as you'll remember, the board did approve me moving forward with the key card system for the county, we are still in process. We've made one single purchase as a test, and I did that, I bought a keypad lock for my office at Amazon. We had another conference call with Bank of America yesterday in the training of the web pages and things like that, but one of the things that's required by the state is anything we do with the key card has to be set up, set out as an agenda item specifically approved by this board for the payment. They have a special form that's included, I've attached the printout of the statement to show the 97, 91 that we are paying to Bank of America. So this will be the process. I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks that we'll be kind of in a full board, limited scope, as was approved by the board, which was, you know, for some narrow online purchasing done by our office on behalf of the departments and some travel packaging, or bookings for use, so this is just kind of that next step in getting us fully activated and on board.
I'm against it.
Make the motion to approve the expenditure for the key card produced last month. I'll second. He's trying to give Troy a hard time. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion, Martin? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I will report the first key card purchased, and on behalf of District 3.
Okay. Item 14, any citizens are going to be heard? Hearing none. Item 15, comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners, gentlemen, at this time, you'd like to discuss or talk about your ideas of the presentation we had this morning, I think it's appropriate at this time to do that, if you wanted to.
I don't have nothing on that, but I do have a comment on the evaluations, the way our salaries are set up, what county was that?
Grady County.
Grady County, they've been overpaying themselves, and I guess we have done some checking, and Logan County is not overpaying ourselves, we're actually under about 3,000, so we're in good shape on that, but another thing I'd like to bring up is, on our last agenda, we met with ODOT on our five-year plan, on the CRIB.
Yes, sir.
And they informed us that we're going to have to shelve projects, we don't have enough money to do a lot of our projects that we're wanting to get done.
Right.
But yet, they gave Mike Patterson a $28,000 a year pay raise, and I just wanted to point that out, that getting him 28,000 more is more important than doing projects, I guess.
So what you're saying is, he's making more than 28,000, they actually gave him a $28,000 a year raise, he's already making over 200,000 dollars a year, right?
Right. He just got another 28,000, but we're going to shovel, or shelve projects because we don't have the funding, so.
Right. Well, I'd also point out that with your comment there, that the man in charge of the public government portion of ODOT was on an extended vacation during this time as well.
That's all I got.
Mike?
I've heard your spiel, I looked it up on the city's lawsuit, they're getting 25% of whatever comes through, there's also the possibility of counter lawsuits, which is pretty normal, I guess, so that, look at the, it'll be a problem, there you are. That's about it.
Okay.
Chairman, before you move on, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Alan Askew and his brother came to my office, they are, they do a lot of family history research, their grandfather is John B. Favor, who was a county commissioner and whose name is on the cornerstone for the building of the courthouse, and after they had walked around and saw some old pictures from the time period that was on the wall, various walls around the courthouse, they brought in and gave to me the picture of Mr. Favor, and asked that we might want to put it up somewhere for them to recognize their grandfather and his contribution to the building of the courthouse and to Logan County, so I wanted to recognize in the meeting publicly and thank Mr. Askew for doing that, and assure him we will hang the picture of Mr. Favor somewhere in the courthouse.
Absolutely, so he was one of the first county commissioners when Oklahoma became a state?
Well, yes, he must have been, his name's on the cornerstone, yes.
Yeah.
And the courthouse was actually built in the year of state code, which was 1907, so.
And we have a school, and they know they did it.
So I just wanted, like I said, to publicly recognize that we have received this from Mr. Askew and his brother.
Thank you, Troy.
Sweet.
They knew, got anything, or? Thanks for coming. All right. Item 16, consideration of possible action on adjournment.
I'll move.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.